Alrighty, good afternoon Commissioners and over to you Chair Harrington.
Good afternoon everyone, welcome to the Thursday, October 30th, 2025 Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. This is Chair Catherine Harrington here in our work session room. I'm joined by Vice Chair Commissioner Pam Trees, Commissioner Jerry Willey, Commissioner Nafisa Fai and Commissioner Jason Snyder. We have three items on our roundtable agenda for today with lots of time in topic three for board discussion. The first item is a kickoff item. It was killed yesterday, but I chose to resurrect it today to provide some context for the work that we have to do today and out into the future. Would ask for your patience, this will be leading somewhere. But I have a few things to share. There's this expression, may you live in interesting times and we are certainly here in government, living in very interesting times. I am no Winston Churchill. I know that, but I also know what my duty is and I take inspiration from some of his best work, including quotes. One such quote is, "Success is not final, failure is not fatal, it is the courage to continue that counts." Also, courage is what it takes to stand up and speak, courage is also what it takes to sit down and listen. We are part of government, we are here as a Washington County government. We work with our federal government, our state government, our regional government and our city government. No matter the events, and we've had lots of them this year, government is still here and our work must continue. As you've heard me say today and will continue to hear me say into the days ahead, we are Washington County government. Each of us on the board and every single dedicated public servant employee, all 2,976 of them, works hard each and every day. Each day we make our republic stronger, doing our work at each of these government levels, federal, state, county and city. While we have some awful goings on, it is also important to celebrate and recognize our accomplishments, the progress that we make for our community working together. The night of the State of the County, multiple of you shared with me, that was the best one yet. Well, for me, it's taken years of practice, it's only taken seven years. And since many employees, since then, many employees have expressed to me their gratitude for being seen, for their work being recognized and for celebrating together. So in honor of that theme of celebrating our accomplishments, for this portion of our agenda, I am your fake comedian host. Like I said, it is leading somewhere. Imagine me in a tuxedo with a top hat. This is the best top hat I have in possession, it happens to be OSHA safety rated. The Academy of Motion Pictures Arts and Sciences presents annual awards for artistic and technical merit in the film industry. Well, we have our own state of the county academy awards. So today I would like to share such recognition. First is our emcee extraordinaire Philip Bransford. For script writing and editing, Mary Fetch. And on top of script writing and editing, add to that visual effects and directing Sarah Coffin. We've actually had 365 views of our YouTube thus far. And for teleprompting director, teleprompter directing Grace Zarpak. And now to our actors for their artistry in board leadership. In the category of a home for all, Commissioner Jason Snyder. In the category of caring for people, highlighting mental health and addiction recovery, Commissioner Pam Trees. In the category, there is time for that. In the category of bringing all aspects of life together, work and play, particularly Hag Lake, with the essence of water and the spirit of getting things done, Commissioner Jerry Willey. In the category of physical mobility, getting to where you want to go safely and comfortably, roads, sidewalks, trails, buses and trains as part of public transit that connects people to places and other people in our diverse community with people, Commissioner Nafisa Fai. And in the best film premiere category, despite having the talented and dedicated Board of County Commissioners, we have producers, our ACAs, our CFO, HR and more. All of that crew is brought together because of our executive producers and filmmakers. We'd like to celebrate and recognize interim County Council Courtney Duke Dreeson, our newest executive producer, County Council Leader Alex Garnett, and of course, our county administrative officer, Tanya Angie. Without which, these actors would not have a film. That's our show tonight folks, I hope you enjoyed it and now to our work this very afternoon. May you all enjoy a little fun.
Thank you.
This is a great roundtable. Now to our work at hand. We know we have work ahead, tough conditions, we've got funding flow challenges, we have escalating costs of growth. And one thing that I can count on you as my fellow colleagues, we endeavor to make thoughtful decisions. And towards that end, our team had put together a service suite inventory a couple of years ago to enable us to better understand the whys and what fours of our service portfolio. We've each had some additional time to look at this, but we've just recently been enabled to look, to roll up our sleeves and dive deep into the data with our own hands. So to make sure that we, as a work group of five, have the opportunity to learn together, but also discuss our learnings with one another. I've asked staff if we could please start with a overview presentation of the county service level assessment tool and to take us all through, all of us through that. And so that brings us to topic two. And after we go through all of that, I would like to anchor us all as a collective work group and then talk about next steps with that moving forward. I'm afraid to raise it up. There you go.
Okay.
Welcome back up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you Chair Harrington and Board. Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators and I'm here with Fiza Noor, the extraordinary keeper, creator and teacher of the service level assessment. And so she's going to kick us off and then I'll go over quickly because you've all seen it before, some of the just countywide data. And then we really want to spend some time answering your questions and we have the database actually available to put up on the screen and do some filtering or answer questions that you have that you tried to do it and something didn't work, we want to hear about it. And I'll be the clicker. The clicker has a,
the clicker has a bone to pick with Marnie.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, usually it's way ahead of me. Oh, so I think I kind of covered this before I clicked forward, but just want to do a reminder about the project, the generous database that was created as well as some of the limitations and how it can and maybe shouldn't be used. And then like I said, I'll run through really quickly the countywide results and then we'll do some case studies with you.
Thank you, Marnie. Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Fiza Noor, I work with Marnie in the CEO office. And today we will be talking about SLA database, I know you are familiar with it so far with the tool that we have shared with you. But just as a reminder, we started this project to develop a comprehensive inventory of all county services. And it was a two-part project in phase one, we asked the staff to really think through what services, what services the county provides in each department. And it was an iterative process where we received a list initially, reviewed it together with the staff of each department and finalized the list that you have in the tool available to you at this point. As a second phase, we created some corresponding characteristics for each services such as geography where the services are provided or how much they cost or whether they're mandated or not. And then the staff answered questions about each service they had created inventory for. And that's also included in the results that Marnie is going to provide. On the next slide, we just have a brief overview of the service inventory numbers. And this is a graphic that shows you based on the size of the number of services is a graph associated with that. So we have 297 total services that we finally through iterative process dialed down to, if you remember from our previous presentation, at any given time we were at 1,000 services. Yes. So this is the final result of that iterative process, 297 services. And in the next following slides, you will see the service level characteristics that we came up with. They are mandates, funding, service delivery and geography. And you will see that these same color coding mandates are in blue, funding is in green, service delivery is in gray and then geography is dark blue. Is it coordinated with the tool that you see, you also see mandates in blue, funding in green, service delivery in gray and geography in dark blue on that Excel tool as well. The, this is just a reminder that there is two levels of information on this data tool. One is department wide and then it also has each individual service available for you to view through and specific answers about that particular service out of all, for all 297 services.
So you've seen these slides before, so I'll go through them relatively quickly. But the first one is results and these are countywide results. So these are looking at all of the departments, all of the services. And I think what's key on here is that 220 of the 320 serve or the 270 services are mandated services. And then you can see below the source of the requirements. So you'll, you can see the top line, 153 are state requirements and you can see that list. It goes through Board, Board of Commissioners, so that's local ordinance and code, federal and interlocal agreements and then metro requirements. And then also you can see why are the services provided? And you can distinguish here countywide that the biggest one is that legislative or administrative rules at the bottom, 177. So the other, the other reasons are financial obligations. So like our financial assistance agreement with the state, for example, and then executive orders or a contractual agreement, so agreements with metro for example. So what this is showing again of the 220 services that are required. It is saying why the services, why are of the, I'm sorry, of the 77 services that are not required, why is the service provided? And you'll see the biggest reason is it's identified by industry best practice. And then also required or identified in operational or strategic plans and those are at the department level. And informed by data or now analysis, community assessments, those kinds of things. And so then the next slide is going to focus on a summary of funding. And just as a reminder, we use ranges of funding, so we didn't capture exact funding amount. And the ranges that you'll see in the database that you all have copies of now, those are, those were the ranges in 2023. So just as a reminder, this is 2025, so some have changed, some more significantly than others. But as a reminder, it will be in a range. And then we also captured from department directors approximately what percentage of the services funded using general fund? And so you'll also see those percentage estimates. So this slide is showing what I think is significant on this slide is that the programs down at the bottom that have the most 100% general fund contribution are the 0 to 250,000 range. And the services that are at the top of the range, the 10 million to all the way up to the 50 million plus, you'll see that there is very little or no green bar there. So those most expensive services are not 100% general fund, but you can see the other bands there that they are often receiving some contribution from the general fund. I sort of see questions on your faces, but maybe you're saving them. So, and this one is just showing by revenue source. So if it's not county general fund, what is the primary revenue source? And you can see state, state funds, federal funds and then user fees, fine citations are at the top. And then there is the line that says services without external revenue sources. Those are obviously the general fund services, those are 100% general fund. And then this slide shows who are the, who are the county services provided to, who are the direct recipients? And again, you can see that 206 services out of the 270 services, it's direct, it's a direct service that benefits community members or the general public. And then you can see the other categories, there are government agency, nonprofits and for-profit organizations. And then the other is number of services that are provided directly versus contracted. And you can see that Washington County is truly a county of partnership because the majority of our services are provided in partnership with other community organizations or cities or other local governments.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the category, community member slash general public?
So community member slash general public is really described as,
recipients, sorry.
Yes.
I was thinking service delivery.
Yep, sorry, and both are on this, so sorry, it can be confusing. Yep, you answered your own question.
Yeah. Read the title Catherine.
And then what this shows is service geography or it's a, you know, again, organization wide. And you can see that the majority of the services, 171 of the services that were identified are provided countywide, so not to a specific geography. And then on the other chart there, you can see of those services that are provided to specific geography, it breaks down where, so the highest being unincorporated Washington County and then urban rural and special districts.
And with that, go back to that prior slide. So the unincorporated category is the combination of urban and rural, right?
So for, for the purposes of this service level assessment, it was, we asked specifically if it's rural or urban, unincorporated or all unincorporated. So that is my understanding is that a department director could have said all unincorporated, which would include both urban and rural or only rural unincorporated. So does that answer?
Yes, exclusively rural or exclusively urban, which is why all unincorporated is the same as adding those two.
Yep.
Yep, we're saying the same thing.
And just to clarify further, the, these are, the characteristics on the right are coming from the, not the 42 on the left, but there's more, like something can fit in more than one of the categories. They're not mutually exclusive, which I think is important to understand that chart.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out, yep. Okay. Back to Fiza.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I just want to say, we do really appreciate, we did have one-on-ones with each of you. And I know, you know, Fiza's heart was singing because hearing from all of you how important it was to have this database and great, really great questions about how to use the database. And a couple of, they won't admit it, but I would say super users of Excel databases. So we're, we're really excited that you're learning more about it.
Thanks, Marnie, yes, I, I was really excited. I was also more excited on behalf of all the staff that really worked hard to gather all this for us. So they spent almost a year with us in curating all this data for your use. So that's what makes me really happy that all their hard work is not sitting on a shelf, but you guys are actually engaging with it. So I, I appreciate that. This is just a reminder, last, I'll take a minute just to remind that when we designed this database, we wanted to make sure that what is the best use case for it is a reminder here and what is, it should not be used for. So this database is basically intended for use to answer questions such as which services are provided to specific geographic areas.
What's going on? I don't know if it's just that mic, maybe you can borrow Jerry's mic?
Can you hear me okay?
Well, I want to make sure the zoom. Pick you up, Jerry.
Thank you. Let's try this one. Okay, coming back, so another thing about funding, like which services are funded by specific external revenue sources such as federal funds, state funds, grant user fee? And what's the estimated magnitude of these funding sources? Marnie reminded that we asked the questions about funding in interval in ranges. So we don't have fine dollars and cents number there, but you have an approximate idea of where the funding lands. And you could ask questions such as mandates, like which services are required by legislative or administrative rules, executive orders or contractual obligation, that should, those questions should be answered by this data. The next one tells you possible use case could be used for answering questions such as how many services are required by legislative and administrative rules? So we could filter through the services, only the ones that are mandated and it gives you a total number of how many services, which services receive 25% or less funding from the general funds. We have a specific column in the tool that identifies general fund funding and its percentage associated with it as identified by the staff. So you can use the tool to answer that question. How many services are provided in corporate areas? We just saw that on the graph and how many services cost beyond a certain number or under a certain number? And what are these? What we do caution against and want to remind that this is self-reported data and high-level data and revenue cost and it were estimated and the funding are given in intervals. And also this data represents fiscal year 23. So when looking at the tool, I would remind everyone that the services with the exception of some have not drastically changed. The geographies have not drastically changed since 2023. But as you look at the financial numbers, please keep in mind that this is a 2023 through 2023 fiscal year data that the staff provided us at that time. And also just another additional thought that if you ask a question and you narrow down your services to a specific department or specific number of services and you have further questions, at that point, we would be in a position to go back to staff and do further analysis should you need additional answers such as a particular citation for one service or something. But additional details, it was difficult to collect on all 320 services that end up in the tool. So, but I think that it's a stepping stone to further analysis.
Point, we would like to entertain your questions and we are able to pull the database up and display it. If, if you want to, for example, say, you know, I wanted to ask this question, but I didn't quite get the filters. And we can run through that, but this is really now your time, whatever sort of messy way work through this and get help. And as always, we're still available for additional one-on-ones, especially the expert over here that can filter so excellently.
I have a question. First of all, this is so cool and it's, and it's amazing how, what you can learn through it. And I just want to say thank you Fiza and Marnie took some extra time with me after our initial briefing and went further into it. I appreciated that. I'm a little confused, don't we have a number 320 here?
We have a number 320 and you'll see 297 on the slide, yes, I can explain that.
Would you?
So every department also added a certain, in our data, a role which is listed as department admin. That is to represent that every department does some of the administrative work, whether it be related to finance or HR in terms of recruiting and other things that is done in-house in that department as administrative work. And that across all departments add the number to make it 320, which is 23 additional rows, which are showing in the filtered summary screen as 320, they are representing.
Considering those like services.
Right, they were not included in 320, in 297 slide.
Sorry, and I said 270, I have, yeah, you should have corrected.
297 and 320, the 23 differences department admin. Yeah, I had to look at that myself very closely two weeks ago, like there is a discrepancy here in these slides. But I realized that the slide was built too nice.
And we also had a discussion about mandates and what is a mandate mean? We also, we discussed the concept that maybe HR general counsel is not mandated, but you don't have an organization.
Exactly, so what are you going to do? And that also led me to believe about, to think about the fact that we charge for internal services through our budgeting process. And I'm not, I don't understand quite how that's represented in the service assessment tool or is it or should it be? So I can answer that a little bit, I think that in 2023, as we were doing this, at that time, we were sort of in process of shifting toward funding. as we were doing this, at that time, we were sort of in process of shifting toward funding our internal services through the capital, or through capital, through the cost allocation plan. And so that is, so a lot of them are showing up, and this, it's a good example of, remember, this is twenty-twenty-three. Several of them are showing up as heavily reliant on county general fund. And now that we've moved to a cost allocation plan, that is one of the areas that's changed. So you will see finance in there, for example, and you'll see finance, all of the data associated with the services from finance. But it is going to show up right now in this database as reliant on county general fund. Or I think it is, that might have been one of the early ones that we shifted to cap, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie.
Way to say that, as, as I look at it, is this community service level assessment tool is one tool. We also have our budget, right? And so it's a matter, and those aren't the only two I use. What are the plans of record or the POR for each of the programs? Just because a program has a budget for this year, we try through the budget to document the future investment trends. Like we might be in the first year of a three-year major investment for something. So those are the three tools that I keep in mind and try to use together. But I think one of the things you fundamentally hit on was what does a mandate mean? And that's something I'll get to later. Other commissioners, comments, questions, things you want to share at this juncture?
I certainly have, I guess I want to, I want to thank you again, I know I thanked you in our individual meetings or briefing as well. But I do want to provide public thanks for the whole team and what it took to get to this point. What this tool's allowed me to do so far is both better familiarize myself with things I feel like I should know. Like, for example, what are all the things we spend at least, you know, more than twenty million dollars a year on? Like, I feel like I should know that, but, you know, the, looking at the budget by itself in a hundreds-of-page book makes that challenge. I mean, that's not that easy to just sort of figure out. In this tool, that's much easier to figure out. It also helped me evaluate whether we were spending large amounts of money on anything that's not mandated. And the short answer to that for the public, at least with twenty-twenty-three information, was no. And I don't think there've been decisions made to, to change that dynamic. But th- those are the kinds of questions so far that I've been really working through to make sure I better understand exactly how we're using our resources. I think the, the percentage of general fund that contributes is a particularly useful and unique aspect of this. I know it's somewhat qualitative in the way that it's reported, but I, I still, when, when we are challenged with some of the decisions we have to make, I think it's an important filter for us to be able to use. So those are my just high-level comments.
And I'll, I'll jump in and thank you both. I really enjoyed our briefing. I think you said it well, Marnie, and I will include you in that, you both were great teachers. You know, especially if you're not familiar with how to navigate Excel spreadsheet and how to filter. I feel comfortable, and I also feel comfortable that Bren, who's supporting Commissioner Snyder and I, knows this backwards from. So I think we're in great hands, I feel comfortable navigating. And I think the, the thing we talked about in my briefing was, you know, in terms of the legislative funds, services that are required by legislative. I think I would have liked a disaggregation of that particular framing and to try to understand a bit more about which ORS requires us to do this so that we can have a policy discussion in sort of, or not even have a policy discussion if it's not required. But at least know, rather than just saying this many services are required by a legislative. I think that's one thing, and I hear you a lot of clear what you said in the briefing, that it's a lot of work for the staff and it needs to be a board-directed. So I'm not going to put it on the table to say, this is what I want, but as a one individual commissioner, I would have liked to see that and to know a bit more about the, the ORS. And then because, you know, we have a bone to pick with state legislatures, right? That pass and funded mandates that have a consequences to us. And I think it would have given that level of understanding for me. But, you know, this is why we're a whole county and we're one Washington county, and I know I can reach out to you and say, hey, I, I'd like to learn this, or I perhaps could do that homework myself. So if none of the board is interested, I'm happy to. But that was just my one feedback of this whole tool. The other celebration I'll do is I really like the, the, the general fund, understanding the aggregate of the number of services that contribute to that. And, and also understanding where the admin section of it fits into that general fund category. So I thought that was really a good, a good way of knowing the impact of the general fund. Because, you know, in the budget process, we know that, but we're also dealing with two billion-dollar budget. So it gets lost in the shovel. But the general fund has a tremendous impact for Washington County. I see the investments we're making, so kudos. I appreciate this tool, I appreciate the time you spent on this, it's a great service. It's a good start, you know, maybe the next iterations would be that particular piece of knowing the ORS. And then we can have a conversation of what services are really required and why should they be required.
Thank you, Commissioner Fai, and for the rest of the board, we do have full citations for HHS. And can share that, and for the other, I don't know, two, two hundred services. If you have a specific question, because the, the, it will say whether it's mandated by the legislature, and we're happy to get that. But as FISA said, especially on the timeline given right now, we wouldn't be able to do that for all two hundred and ninety-seven services. But we're happy to get it for specific, and I think it's a great suggestion for the next iteration. All research has some limitations, and this is one that several of us have looked back and said, oh, I wish we would have collected that while, while we were doing it, because we know that the directors went and looked at it. And we just didn't collect it.
Though that as we're prioritizing and like figuring out, like maybe there's ten or fifteen things we want to take a closer look at that we're concerned about. That might be a space where you dig in and then bring back the statutes and say, this is exactly what they say we got to do. Or not. How specific, you know, do they just say you have to do it? Like, are we just giving it, you know, C-minus efforts acceptable? Or, you know, is it real, you got to do solid B-plus?
Marnie, the other thing that came up in our briefing was also the executive order piece of it, and bit more explanation on that one as well. But my, that's just.
Yeah, and at that time, most of, when we refer to executive order, most were state executive orders. In twenty-twenty-three, so like the housing services.
So something might have been fired by, by that.
Right, right.
An executive.
Right, right, I'm not saying all, but most at that time were state executive order.
Yeah, but there's a lot more work that I need to do with this, there's just a tremendous, I don't know. I don't even know how you begin to do that, but I know that if I have any questions on how to put together a spreadsheet, I'm going to call you. The, without pulling that up, this slide here has the number of services on it. Is, would there be a way that you could put dollars in there? So in other words, I could see how much general fund money we're spending on health and human services versus other. I don't, I don't know, maybe I'm asking too much in there, but to me, it's kind of important to know how much money we spend on how many services that we provide, so I don't really.
I like that idea, actually. And are you requesting general fund or all?
I don't know, what do you think? I mean, general fund seems to be our focus, because we only spend general fund money, go ahead, Tom.
Can I make a suggestion that the board is very clear on what you're asking staff to do? We had the benefit of federal funds to be able to conduct this work. So this could be endless work based on curiosity that you may have. Some of, some of, in the table that you were pointing to, Jerry, some of those services don't exist anymore because they were federally funded at the time. So at the end of this conversation today, I would just ask, ask your questions about curiosity, but then if there's clear board direction so that we can determine if there's staff capacity to follow up on that.
So what services are no longer?
So for example.
Office of sustainability maybe is not there.
Correct, we had many programs that this board had shored up with economic development, for example, that were CARES-focused and then IRPA-focused, so that's another area.
Yeah, well, I don't want to ask, I don't want to ask a question that requires a lot of additional work, because you already put a lot in. So maybe I'll just hit the pause button on that and, and do my homework and then.
Well, yeah.
Get a way of, if there's a way to display it based on the data we already have, that wouldn't be too awful. But if it's, if it requires like going and getting two hundred and ninety-seven new pieces of data, that's the struggle.
No, I'm saying just boxes.
Yeah.
Because our data is in range, it is a limitation of that range. So if three services say they each cost between five hundred million, if I aggregate a million for each, you are, you're going to look at a three-million estimate, but where in reality, it could be anywhere half of that or a little over that. So that you would get a incorrect aggregate total number. Because essentially what, another piece that was mentioned, the other source could be like the whole department budget, would be an place to look at like how much, if you are looking at what seventy-seven services in health and human services call, perhaps we could go and maybe find that number estimated in the budget as opposed to aggregating.
Because they're the line item for, under HHS, of how much general fund funding goes into HHS. It is broken down by all of the services.
No, I, I think I was just asking for the total, not broken down by services. But you make a very good point that you have in your information, put in ranges.
Tool is imprecise.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's precise about services, which is, I think I'm trying to remember that that's the filter.
And I think it's close enough on the, for us to be able to make meaningful decisions and ask smart questions. That to me is what it's for. I do realize that we've, you know, we do give up some level of precision, but I don't know that our policy decision-making needs that level of precision.
Well, I don't know that that's the purpose of this tool anyway.
Yeah.
Jason, you make a good point, it's, this is an overview, right, and we need to keep it in that perspective, so good point.
We love these discussions, questions, this is exactly what it should spur.
I think, and I, I guess as the, CIO stated, like, what's the direction? Like, to me, this tool and the work, other than follow-up questions we may have about specific things, to me, this work is, the tool is done, and we now need to use it. Given my perspective, it, it doesn't have to be shared by everybody. But I don't, I don't want to see you all, other than us working it, using it, and then maybe making decisions from it. I don't, I don't think the tool itself needs more work.
The crafting of the tool.
Correct.
You were really getting at the use of the tool, the questions we ask, the discussions we have.
That's, that's different.
Exactly, so before I go as last of one of five, Ms. Angie, is there anything you'd like to share with us thus far? We're not done, don't worry.
So many of you had hit on this, there's just a few reminders I want to just highlight. This was the county's first ever attempt at doing this. There were different levels of iteration before, but this deep. And so just want to commend all of the staff time and FISA's leadership, especially within this space to get to this point. I also, I appreciate this discussion, I've reminded this board several times before. This was the point in time, we were able to use the federal funds to be able to conduct this work. We do not have staff capacity at this point without additional resources to redo that work for this current point in time. So additional follow-up questions, like how you use this tool to, for your decision-making, absolutely are on the table. But I just want to be, when I talk about staff capacity, I, I just want to ground us, not only to meet your expectations, moving forward, but just to make sure that it's, it's meaningful as well.
Do you see you and the leadership team using this tool as you're doing your budget planning for next year as well?
They already have used it in the previous years, budget planning, this has been, this has been helpful to them.
Well, is there any place that you've footnoted that, what you just said, that this is a point in time, this is twenty-three? There's other monies that is incorporated in this, is there some place where we can say, oh yeah, that's right?
It's, but that's been shared in every presentation we've given to the board.
Me to remember that?
No, we, we can make sure that it, those words are on, on the screen, that that's even more explicit than it is, but.
Think, I think it's important to go back to the project purpose and objectives, and it's all about services, it's not about dollars. And I just want to pinpoint that as well.
Well, I, I guess I wasn't just referring that to dollars, I was referring it to outside sources of dollars that we would take into consideration when looking at this. That's okay, I, I have not done enough homework on this yet, and so I will defer back to you, Trey.
Well, I think you, you've hit the nail on the head, and Commissioner Snyder has mentioned this too. More work ahead, more homework ahead. I've only just started really spending time rolling up my sleeves and in with the data. And yeah, I have some pages of, of questions, and I'm happy to type those up and have, have the necessary one-on-ones for that. But I think there is also power in us as a work group, sharing those questions and those answers and what the learnings are, and I'll lead to a proposal. Thank you to each of you once again for attending this morning's annual housing forum. One of the words we heard there was simplify. And I'll, I'll share some context with you in a moment, but to finish up topic two before I get to topic three, one of the things we have been doing, where we have two proposals on the ballot for the November fourth, where we've had to go and ask the public for more resources, right? We've talked about the need for some major capital investments by our community. And one of the things that I know have been taught and believe in is that before you can ask the public for more, you have to prove that you have scrubbed everything you can, everywhere that you can. So as we've talked about, this is a tool, a first-ever tool with a point-in-time snapshot as an attempt to get to the question of, why do we do what we do? Must we do it, or why do we want to do it? And really trying to get to, at the most fundamental level of why we do it. And I don't know that this tool can get to that most fundamental level. We learned a lot through the budget work, the proposed budget effort, that most of the, the investments that our annual budget makes is in important community work. We're either mandated to do it, or our community needs us to do it. But now as we look ahead, as cost continues, and yet we live in the property tax constraints that we have, we're going. we're going to have, we as the board are going to have to provide a different type of direction, not necessarily a type, but different direction for next year and the years ahead than we have for even last year. So I've been thinking a lot about, so how do we go about that? Now, one thing I know in working with each of you and with our excellent staff is one way we do it is together. So let me give an example of something, it's a simple example, but it goes to the type of questions that I find myself asking. I had a chance to learn a lot about the law library because, is something wrong?
No, I was just thinking we could close that so that anybody viewing could see you.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Nope, it's okay. It's okay. So one, one example, we had the opportunity last year to, to learn about a report that our law librarian did with another law librarian. They went after some grant funding and took an inventory of all of the law library services throughout the state. Every county is required to have a law library. That's it. That's as deep as the mandate goes. We should be very proud that we've had a really great comprehensive law library. But because of our fiscal, financial constraints, we've had to go from having essentially great and good level support to satisfactory level support. And now thinking about continued costs, I wonder, do I have to give direction to go to a mediocre level? Because the only thing required is that there is a thing called a law library. Could be some computer in the corner, right? Could be by appointment only with very limited hours. So that's why it's that level of service delivery. Is that what it's going to take with some aspects of the county service portfolio in order for us to simply stay in business to do a satisfactory level in other aspects of the portfolio? So more work ahead. So what am I proposing? So we're now moving to the topic number three. If I could, thank you, Marty and Pfizer for joining us. There's 10 topics for the public and 12 topics per meeting room. So this material will be updated in the packet available electronically, but it is currently available in our meeting room here for all members of our public. So the first item, they go together, but I'm going to describe each first. The first one, this isn't the first time you've heard a goal, this goal for me, but a goal of developing a shared common understanding for the development of the proposed budget for fiscal year 27 by us, the five-member Board of Commissioners. You can break that down. Why? Why do we have to do this? Because we collectively as a work group provide direction to our county administrator, our budget officer. So this is a very simple breakdown. We're here in October. The budget process through approval goes to May, and of course, we have adoption in June. Management has asked us for our support to give our proposed budget guiding principles and priorities a month earlier than we've done in December, in line with management starting the proposed budget process. We know, we, October 2nd, we talked about the budget calendar. And I gave you all in September, I believe it was, a bunch of survey questions to think about. I asked for this additional roundtable as a first step, and I'll get to that in a minute. November 6th, we'll have a roundtable where we'll get a five-year budget forecast. And if not then, then in December, we'll be going over the proposed budget scenarios and so forth. Fundamentally, I don't think we're going to be able to give a rock-solid set of budget guiding principles and priorities in December. I think we're going to have to do something a little bit more directional than we did last year. I've been looking at those guiding principles and priorities from last year, time and time again. And I don't think they're necessary, but I don't think they're going to be sufficient. You, you all can prove me differently or debate that. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just speaking as one of five and as your chair, trying to figure out how to make highest and best use of our limited collective time. So I propose that we utilize this gift that we have, the county service level assessment tool, and go through a process together. How can we use that tool and the information and our learnings together? And see if we can provide a better set of, more useful set of guiding principles and priorities than we did last year. Hey, we could just pass the buck and say, here you go, Ms. Angie, we're going to use the same ones as last year. Good luck. We'll see what kind of proposed budget you and your staff have come up with.
So you're envisioning something more specific?
Yes.
Am I getting that right?
Yes. And the, the bullet lists below, we'll get at why and some of the base facts. So systematically, all I'm thinking about is, we're having this first, now I'm down in the proposal rows in that chart, county service level assessment. So today, we're having just the first discussion. Just like you mentioned, Commissioner Willie, I got some homework to do, right? Questions to ask. So, you know, I have no problem embarrassing myself and asking, quote unquote, "the dumb questions," right? Am I looking at this right? You know? The data I dug in, I thought, hey, this won't be too hard, you know? Out of this, I should be able to take areas that are mandated and just because the state allows us to do it, maybe we give it back. Well, guess what? I'm finding it isn't so easy. So given what we have for a full plate, November 6th, and the time for more work, I see an opportunity for us to sync back up December 4th, share our questions, have further discussion. I don't think I have myself as one of five any more information needs of staff today. I have questions about what that data is telling me so that I know how to use it. Right? And that's the one-on-one stuff that I'm happy to continue spending time on through November and come back and share in December. Who knows? Maybe we'll be doing great with a draft set of guiding principles and priorities in December. But worst case, plan for the worst, hope for the best is one of my operational mottos. I'm thinking, okay, I see us, we're going to be talking fourth about the budget scenario, right? Ms. Angie and staff usually bring those into us and ask us based upon a certain set of facts for further input and guidance. And, but I'm thinking, okay, we'll use some of that December meeting time as well to share information with one another. What did we learn? What does that tell us? Asking those questions that you talked about, Commissioner Snyder. And maybe Commissioner Phi taking some of those service levels that are ORS-supported, but you know, we can't fit 10 pounds of flour in a five-pound sack, right? We've got 10 pounds of ORSs to do things, but we only have a five-pound sack to do what we do. So what are we going to do? And it's not as easy as buying a new container, sadly. So this is the worst case that I see. We can do better than a worst case potentially. But at least, for lack of a better plan, I have a plan for a plan, right? So it's like, okay, we may need a second special meeting, special roundtable, which could be all of one hour on a Tuesday or another hour on a Thursday, where we review the final draft of budget guiding principles and priorities. And I see the opportunity of either Tuesday, January 27th or February 3rd as the drop dead opportunities for adopting those guiding principles and priorities. But also, the team is challenged to put together the proposed budget by the end of April. So looking ahead, just like we've done in some prior years, thinking about, well, we could help Ms. Angie and staff out if we just don't have those roundtables in March and April. So, so that's just the construct of the table. But what have we really got? So I put together this draft, draft list of common understanding. Is everybody with me? Okay. So I'm going to walk through each of these statements below. We've heard from Ms. Angie time and time again, the Washington County government budget has a structural budget imbalance. It's a fact. The proposed budget for fiscal year 27 is once again a subtraction exercise.
Do we know that for sure with the, like, without the forecast or?
I, I'm going to speak in generality right now. So yes, we do. I want to take you back to the actions we had to take last year's, during last year's budget. We had a SIP agreement rolling off.
Yep.
And that meant we had property rolling on to the tax rolls. Staff planned for that in your budget. So we know that this year's AV will have an increase because of that, which I want to stress, that was planned for in this adopted budget. There has, we've historically seen in the county 4.25 to 4.5 AV growth. And so we will be laying that out of that roll-on, roll-off because it gets very confusing. But we had planned for that. So at still, even best case in like a 4.5, that exceeds most of our inflationary cost. We presented health insurance costs, we, we presented wages, we presented at your last budget meeting. So we still have a structural, at the same time, we have population growing. We have, we have increased, you know, state requirements and various aspects, and we have unmet needs that continue to come forward. And when I say unmet needs, I am talking specifically about mandated unmet needs. I am not talking about general.
Nice to do.
Yeah, discretionary. And I'm not minimizing what community expresses. I'm clearly saying mandated. So I'd like to keep that high level and wait for the next roundtable when we'll go more in depth about the fiscal forecast.
If I could jump down to the very last two full bullets. A draft list of needs that must be accommodated in this proposed budget. Jail staffing at a full capacity level. We have pods reopening. That is great news. As we've reached our hiring goals and back to full staffing levels that have caused us to close pods, those new employees are not only hired, but they're trained, and the critical facility construction is completed. That is a wonderful opportunity to have. Jail full body worn camera deployment. That is a tool and an instrument that is long time needed. We have an operational need for it now. That's on the list. We have three new labor agreements that are going into effect with set percentages over the next two-year timeframe. The museum, we still have unknown budget liabilities with the museum collection that will be with us for at least a couple of years. And that note should say, see rolling agenda because we have more information coming to us. And finally, the end of this first list is the ARPA funding. Okay, the ARPA funding ends the end of December 2026, which is a future fiscal year. But nonetheless, we have to be thinking about transition during the proposed fiscal year 27. Thank goodness for ARPA funding. We've been able to beef up our capacity in several different areas. Least of not is communication. You can be doing good work, but if your community doesn't know about it, it doesn't mean squat. It does mean more than squat, but still. Yeah, you know, in this day and age, it isn't enough just to have a great product. You have to sell your product over and over again. So that's just that category of needs to be accommodated. But we also have a list of things, objective list of things to consider. The community corrections center, it's only one of four in the state. The reason why we have it goes to reducing recidivism. And in the latest community corrections biennium plan, I asked for and received a great figure from staff called the pathways figure that outlines, what are the sources of, where do we get these justice-involved individuals? We have sources from our cities, from the courts, from the jail, from the state prison. Customers that are, customer inflows that are totally out of our control. Okay? It's great that we have a community corrections center, but it's not state requirement, nor is a county charter required. We may have to consider the question, should we continue with it? It's just a, a list of objective statements for potential consideration. LUT work is doing a lot of mandated work, but there may be a little bit here and there that we don't have to do so well. The water master, we have one state-funded position, and then we fund more. Should we? Could we maybe not? Their questions. The animal shelter, having a county animal shelter, you know, who doesn't love animals? Pets, kittens, cats. But having a county animal shelter is not state-required, nor is it a county charter-required thing. We may have a question of, hmm, do we, does there have to be a solution? And is there, just needs to be an answer to the question, but not necessarily a county solution? The medical examiner, we've heard for a couple of years now how we are required as one of the most populous counties in the state to have our medical examiner capabilities on our own. And the Oregon State Police not doing what they did in the past for us. So we need to get educated on what the requirements involve. You know, refrigerated trucks aren't cutting it. Courthouse planning, well, you know, our state legislative government relations team came through engaging with the state legislature and successfully achieved a $1.5 million state match this last state ledge cycle for this biennium. But we know the state is taking a hard look at the biennium budget. Might they claw that back? What if it takes, we currently have $1.5 million captured from SIP from our current budget for the local match? You know, what if we punt that out further? I don't know what effects that would have. But is it a hard choice that we or future boards might have to do? And there will be other lists of considerations as we go through the county service level assessment. So all that was by way of Commissioner Snyder's question on bullet number two, the high level overview Ms. Angie provided. So let me finish going through the regular bullet, the other bullets. Third one, the Board of County Commissioners is the governing board, which makes the choices of what the Washington County Service Portfolio is and is not. We have to lead and give guidance for the problem solving needed to support the development of a balanced proposed budget. It isn't just Ms. Angie's problem. As our budget officer, we have to provide the guidance. The federal budget, there's a lot of moving parts there and boy, those moving efforts continue. We're in 30 days of shutdown as of today, the 29th. And we also still have uncertainty about the budget decision efforts that were made earlier this year. So try as our staff might to work for clarity, it isn't as clear as we want or need. And bottom line is that's going to keep going for a while. And yet we have a deadline for the proposed budget. State tax revenue, the projection for our, this biennium, and I don't know how the state represents the biennium year. BY whatever. So hence my question marks. Anyway, we already have a forecast that show, shows it downward simply because of the federal budget changes and yet, and also the tax rate changes that were passed by the federal government with HR1. So that's kind of a double whammy there. The state biennium budget adjustments are going on. And there will be further adjustments in this being the second year. The governor has already asked each department to reduce their budgets by 5%. So we're going to have that to catch up with. So we're coming to the home stretch. Given the last five years of county budget cuts, we have made service level changes such as reductions including to mandated service levels. But more may be needed for the development of the proposed budget. What that targeted service portfolio will be for this next proposed budget is a board policy decision. And I put a note in here to remind us all that we had a good process last year. And I believe we're committed as an organization so that if there is potential reduction, then we make sure that potentially affected employees receive advance notice. And as we know from last year's proposed budget, that that status changes or reduces down from the proposed budget based upon our approved and adopted budget. And hopefully we won't have a repeat of down further because the state budget decided to go down further than what they had talked about in earlier months. But it happens because they have their process. Yea, yes, for following it very closely, unlike what Multnomah County is going through right now with their budget reset. So as a result, I've proposed here a multi-step process in order for us, the Board of County Commissioners, to provide direction to our CAO Budget Officer via our board adopted budget guiding principles and budget guiding priorities. This multi-step process has been made based upon last year's four, five-year forecast. And I point you to the resource for that from November of last year. Because you know, I'm like, am I being too skeptical here? So I've forced myself to go look at what data I do have in there. And we were told last year what it might be and it's not looking much different, folks. In a good way, anyway. And we know we're going to be getting an updated five-year forecast on November 5th. So what I'm imagining, we're going to get that five-year forecast coupled with potentially using, I'm proposing, we use the Community Service Level Assessment Tool information and our discussion of that in the future to form and then finalize our board adopted budget guiding principles and priorities. The last bullet here is reminding us that we have a jail and community corrections expansion project that is on a good planning path for a calendar year 30 opening. And what does that mean? Hence the other document. So what I tried to do here, I'm always dealing with problems of today. Or for example, yesterday afternoon, dealing with the problems of yesterday, while also thinking about the future. And this lays out this year, calendar year 25, and four more years looking ahead. So you see calendar year 26, 27, 28, and 29. And the light blue lines that go down, those are the calendar years. But we also do our planning on a fiscal year basis. Sorry if I'm boring you and going so slow, but I realize you haven't seen this before. So that's why I'm trying to just explain it. We're right in fiscal year 26. It went from July 1, 25, all the way to the last day of June next year. You see the star, you are here. We're here on October 30th in the fourth quarter of the calendar year or the second quarter of the fiscal year. The fiscal years go with the dash green lines. So you see there's fiscal 27, that's our upcoming proposed budget. Then there's fiscal year 28, 29, and 30. So why do I care about those years? Well, um, there's going to be a new board in calendar year 27. And we each, each of us in this work group of five knows what work it has taken for us to get to know the county service portfolio, what the program plans are for each of the major areas, the detail that our excellent assistant county administrators live and breathe every single week. And yet we know that new board is going to have some major things to work on that we don't have to. For example, in calendar year 27, that new board's going to have to do a levy referral for ESPD in the UUAs. It's either going to be on the May ballot or the November ballot because it flat out expires. We also have a major program going on right now, GRO, General Revenue Options. And this board, the five of us are doing foundation building with that program through the end of next year, this current board. Out of that may be ideas. Things where we may or may not have to go to the public and ask for certain county district here and there with an operating levy or with a general Washington County government level. So I took a hard look, when do elections happen? Well, calendar year 26 is a general election year, primary in May and a November general election. So I thought, well, could we be aggressive if, you know, do we have time to put, do the work as the functioning board that we are and get something on the ballot then to ease the pain for future budgets? There's no way.
Not, not done well.
No, not even done.
Unwell.
So I put a line through it, but I wanted you to know I thought about it. I'm not trying to dictate this. But it does take time. And what we'd be talking about is putting something brand new on the ballot, which is a lot harder than doing what you've been doing with existing levies. Been there, done that. I've done multiple brand new capital bond measures and a brand new levy and multiple referrals of existing levies. So we're in calendar year 27. I also tried to remind myself that not a board is going to have to learn. New board members that are going to have to learn their county portfolio, the existing county budget, prepare for the budget that they're going to be facing the end of April. But they also have to do the same thing, learning about clean water services. So I'm marching on through fiscal year 27, thinking about y'all. There's, 27 is an odd year election. So sure, it's possible to have something on the ballot. You already know you're going to have the ESPD levy referral on the ballot. Whether it's a renewal or replacement is somebody else's work. But I thought, gosh, could we put the GRO revenue generation ideas on the ballot? What would it take? Well, given that is, it would be a brand new thing. It, in my world, my brain, it would require referral completion by April or May due to the campaign needs. And you know, it's a real risk. I don't know that the new board's going to be ready to do the work that is necessary. And I know that work is bigger than what our campaign work has been fundraising work for the levy. So I don't see that as viable either. So that brings us to calendar year 28. So here I've been thinking about GRO. Well, I remind myself of another project that I know and love, and I know I'm not alone. I'm in very good company with all of you. And it is the jail and community corrections capacity expansion project. So what do I know about that? We've recently got an update on the plan of record for that. So I've tried representing it here using the color blue. So I had to go backwards on this one. What the current information says is that in calendar year 30, it opens. Well, in order for a brand new building to open, has to be built. And it also needs all the jail deputy and staff to run the place. You can't just fill it with adults in custody. Take some personnel, which means you're going to have to line it up with the public safety levy ops. Or the public safety levy for the funding for the operations for those new personnel. And it takes 18 months to two years to train those folks up and do the burn-in for a new jail. Okay, well, that's time there. And then you've got time to construct a new jail. So I was like, okay, so when can we raise the money? So I thought, oh man, this even year, we've got a primary election in May. And only talking to myself and the program data that is in the public eye. It feels to me like our last opportunity for a jail bond because of the plan of record for construction starting in the second half of calendar year 28. This would require, in my opinion, just remember, I've got Catherine Harrington on this. So if the facts are wrong, that's my bad. Look to me for the bad stuff. It would require a referral by November or December of calendar year 27 because of the campaign needs. It's a new ballot item with bigger campaign fundraising needs. It's bigger than pre-existing levies. We also will need a new early public safety levy replacement for the ops dollars. But what about the GRO project? Well, I needed a happy color, so I chose pink. I think it's iffy, but the first viable chance for a countywide GRO opportunity for fiscal year 28 would require that referral work I've enumerated there. But that feels awful tight to me to try and put it on the May ballot so that the dollars can flow with the fiscal 29 budget. What feels more realistic to me, and I call it the last chance. Of course, it's not the last of time, but it's the last soonest chance is the November 28 ballot, as you see here, November general election. But that means since it has to line up with property taxes, that the dollars wouldn't flow till fiscal year 30. So you may notice that there's this big orange box down there. In our resource constrained environment, government is always resource constrained. But as we know, and what we've had the opportunity to hear from different forums, whether it's a WEA forum or the HBA Housing Forum or listening to the Oregon State Economist at the Forest Grove Cornelius Chamber meeting this past Monday. Our state population is not growing the way it has in the past. And for too long, we've used our growing population as an economic development strategy. And population growth is not an economic development strategy. But nonetheless, we've had growing property taxes because of our household new formation. And so now we're having to look at, how do we go about capturing the power of our household formation and household growth so that more people have affordable apartments, whether they're market rate or subsidy? And how do people have more ownership opportunity, right? That low-end housing, the, the, their first housing ever and going from there. So there's going to be more work there simplifying to support more development. But the challenges of calendar year 27, remember, you're going to, we've, we've been in the first year of four years of the current federal administration. There are at least three more years of the current federal administration. So stuff isn't going to be any easier in calendar 27 in my crystal ball. So that's where I'm like, okay, we are a very well-informed board. Commissioner Fai, this is going to be what, your sixth or seventh budget, right? Commissioner Snyder, you've been with city budgets and you've been through your first county budget. We've been through six or seven, seven budgets just for the county. And a couple of us have had other public agency budgets. And that's just for public sector work. So I am theorizing and proposing, so this is my assumption. So I am theorizing and proposing, so this is my assumption, that we, the current calendar year board, does our community service level assessment work for essentially two budget years? Now, don't get me wrong, we're, we're only empowered to make a budget decision for next year, right?
But you want us to be thinking, you're proposing we think about both.
Exactly, yes, exactly. Because things aren't going to be any easier with proposed year twenty seven and twenty eight. And you're going to have a new board in twenty seven. And given at least this initial roadmap for GRO election and for the jail elections, I think it might behoove us to really look at how do we set a course for sustainable county government services over the next two plus years. So that, my friends, is what has been keeping me up at night the last. And is why I insisted we have this special round table and why I'm proposing that we look at the community service level tool and think about those guiding priorities and principles. So I think I've already tossed at you two different set of tools, right? That survey list that I gave you in September, I needed to use that to get me focused on as one of five, what community outcomes do I want to make sure the proposed budget supports? And what workforce outcomes do I want to make sure as one of five? That my guiding principles and priorities support? I don't, you know, so this, these two tools are my proposal. And I don't know how else to get to those guiding principles and priorities. If you have other ideas, great, let's hear them. But this is the best I could come up with, and I don't have any others up my sleeve.
So the county administrator request is that we try to have budget in by December, right? And we're now, I mean, on, on this proposal, I think you made a very clear description of why that probably can't happen in a meaningful way that you're describing until January twenty seventh or February third. I guess I just worry about the timings, given what.
Yeah, I do too, which is why I went over this with Ms. Angie last week, her first time seeing it. And this is where we can take stock from the forecast and this set of information. And hear from her about some potential budget scenarios. But we know more is needed than just a draft set of guiding principles. I could have stopped there. I said, okay, well, draft is as good as I need to think about today. But I truly tried to come up with, how are we as a work group of five going to demonstrate and adopt a final set so that staff has that firm direction? So it can happen as early as January eighth in my world and as late as February third.
Can, would you mind commenting on how you think this syncs up with your and the leadership team's?
Yeah.
Work?
So what the chair and I had talked about is, and I'm gonna go to the on the long sheet, the proposal line, I just want to make sure we're talking about the, in the same cells, the proposal, the December fourth round table, the proposed budget scenarios. Those are the financial budget scenario or the targets or financial direction to the departments. The departments, um, we open the budget for departments to start working on their budgets every December. As a reminder, last year, we delayed the budget principles and priorities until there was this new board formation. But we still gave the financial direction in December to departments. So what this would mean in the proposal scenarios, and then I'm going to the January eighth round table, is that they would not have your your principles and priorities, but they would still start what, working on the financial targets. As you've learned through the fi- um, service level assessment, assessment, departments have a good understanding of what are their mandated services, et cetera. So they'll, they'll be working through that. I would much rather prefer the work being done earlier in January than later in January because from um, an internal process, um, we call it pencils down. For departments, they must have all of their inputs into the financial system by February ninth. So that's where it would be helpful to have the budget principles and priorities adopted no, no later than the first part of January. But if you can't do that, and it needs to be at the end of January, at least if staff have a good understanding of where's the board's thinking uh, at the beginning of January. But it cannot, cannot go past January.
I think we just have to figure out how to do it by January eighth.
So tell me how.
We need to come very prepared for the next session and the session after that. In my mind. Guess the other question for Tanya, if you don't mind? How much more, like, how much or what level of detail passed what we did last year will be maximally helpful to you and the leadership?
So I've used the statement several times, we're at both.
Yep.
I'm going to use one example. Um, last year, it was challenging um, for some to have the proposed change of turning back child support services to the state. That services still exist. Is it at a reduced service level because the county's general fund doesn't support? Yes, but that was an elimination of service. We've had discuss, your board has had discussions about um, and expressed concerns on individual and group of what is the county's LSA posture within climate action? And just bringing up too. So we are now at a point of really talking about further service eliminations, potentially not meeting state mandates, and that will be even more challenging. So this is where I'm going to put it back on you as a group to really discuss, what is the direction that you want to give me? Because staff will do the work, I will create a proposed budget. We will make decisions based on what information we have for you. But if we get to the end of like that development pipeline, and it's not the right service suite that you're expecting, then, then we get into this conflict phase.
Say what things are potentially a lower priority for the community?
Or that your board, whatever decision I and the team make, that you're going to be supportive of that. So that we go forward and we do the work. And I will say, I have seen that on an individual space, that can be hard because the reality is no one really wants to do less or, or reduce services. In fact, if I would ask you all, you'd have services that you want to increase and see that we do more of. And so this is a very challenging game for you as a board. Um, I call it game because it's what are we going to um, find and what aren't we going to find? But this is about what is the budget process that you want? What is the service suite that you want as a board? And if you're comfortable with me making those decisions, that's a board direction. But if you're not, this is the opportunity to have that direction.
Well, normally we give you the directions in the process of the proposed guiding principles and priorities.
Yeah, so thank you for that question. And I'm just going to continue on the child support service, just because it's sometimes it's easier to give an example. It was, the guiding principles and priorities are very high level. They're kind of higher level strategic priorities. And so you could actually, and since you asked the question, I'm gonna keep it. You could say, Tanya, I don't see why you propose that because it's nowhere, I, I don't see where it's in here. So once we start getting to specific services, principles and priorities are very high level. So I think what the chair is suggesting, given the amount of cuts, that it goes a bit deeper and that you're more clear in areas that you want to be more clear in. That does not in any way mean that you have the ability to be clear in all aspect. I, I'm not saying that. But there may be areas that, given what you know, based on each of your many years of experience, surveys, serving just a community member, also an elected official, also going through year over year budget cuts, and also the service level, are there areas that you want um, to openly say you want to paint or modify that service level? Do you have capacity to do other things within the county?
You know, I, I will say, that's a hard decision. And I feel like there's a lot that I need to understand in order to make that, I'm hap- you know, like, we're elected to make that policy decision, I agree. But there's a bit more of understanding, there's a bit more of work that needs to be done. And I'm happy to look into like a different way, but I feel comfortable in the previous process where you come, you know, we identify scenarios of percentage to meet the balanced budget. And then you come back and make them in the past. So I don't, um, I don't, I don't know what that means. Continue that process, but slowing it down as of here with the guiding principle. So I don't know how the two meet, um, but I'm not sure this budget process, the service level assessment is a good way to make the service level decision as electeds, because then it gets politicized. Because I worry then saying, I want this service cut because, and then go to this service, identify a new service. Or, so I, I, I'm, I'm processing a lot of information here today uh, that are good and some I need to understand more.
So let me step in here, following you. We are a work group of five. We don't individually get to give direction to the CAO. We have to do it as a board majority. And that's what I'm trying to help FOST do. Now, you've just mentioned that getting down to service level is politicized. We are elected officials. Politics is the art of making hard choices. So we can't avoid making hard choices. So that's not a bad thing. It just is. That's why we're elected, to provide this direction, to make these policy choices and to provide that direction to our budget officer. I would suggest.
But can I make a point of clarification, Chair, if I may?
Sure, um, and then I'll finish.
Yeah, absolutely. Or you want to finish and then I?
Nope.
One thing for me, the way I understand, yes, uh, we're elected, we're here to make the hard decisions, uh, informed decisions, I would say. But I think the way I understand my role and responsibility is that as the policymaker, but then we're a county administrator commission charter. So the, the county administrator prepares and presents to us a balanced budget. So I think to overstep that, I just, I'm just concerned about myself inserting as a one elected into that budget process of preparation and then presentation. And then we can make the informed decision to say, wait a minute, I know you've done this work, I don't agree the elimination of this services. Come back to that, to the budget officer. So that's where I was going with, in terms of roles and responsibility for commissioners versus the budget officer, as I understand it. So, um, and, and where I feel comfortable in making that decision. Because at the end of the day, we have to make an informed decision. And that inform, information comes from the budget officer for me to make that. But that's where I was.
Certainly a balance.
Yeah.
So I've lost my train of thought there, but I know where I was trying to head for a closure point. Uh, so we can get to some other board discussion about budgets and where we're at. So, um, November sixth is right around the corner. Staff needs to finish what they're finishing. We've mentioned that we need to spend more time with, as individuals, on the community service level assessment tool. So that's why I've proposed, let's have a thorough sync up for that service level assessment day. I've gone back and looked at the roundtable plan. There's a couple hard copies. It hasn't changed one iota. So for those of you who keep coming to me with questions and whys and what for's, nothing has changed since October second. Don't, you don't need to come to me asking for further clarification. Go to the people who own the topic. I don't own all the topics, I only provide the construct. So as you can see, under November sixth, it isn't just five-year budget, it has some other things. The five-year forecast, the SIP, Ms. Angie's talked about this, and the potential of draft budget principles and priorities. Well, guess what? We already have that draft. It's called the existing ones from this current fiscal year. You've heard me say it over and over and over again, and I'm tired of saying it. I don't think they're going to cut it. We've talked about for every single month, having a federal in-state funding catch-up. How many more memos does Ms. Angie's crew have to give us on the latest this week? Okay, well, who knows? Maybe we're still going to be in a shutdown November sixth. So it's still going to suck, people. We won't be having board training. And we won't be doing anything more on rules of procedure. So we do have time, December fourth, beyond what those budget and finance topics are, to come in. You can share by email to FISA and the BCC communications list what your questions are, right? And they can meet with you before December eighth on answers. And you can resend the list with the answers, you know, what you got out of it. But let's discuss that December fourth so that we, as a work group, can demonstrate that we've advanced our thinking. We already have a draft guiding principles and budget. But I don't think it's going to deal with the reality down here in these last two bullet items. Prove to me I'm wrong. I would love it if you came in here with, take that current base of guiding principles and priorities and make changes that you think are going to address these last two categories. I would love for you to prove me wrong. Am I passionate about this? Yes, because I put in too much time already trying to figure this out. Hence the survey tool you have from your September roundtable, and yet again, another claim. This is worst case. Can we do better? Yes, we can do better. Let's do better.
Chair, so I-
Chair, so I-
We're still going to end up with a proposed budget that we're going to have to sink our teeth into. I hope we don't have a food fight.
Chair, your last two bullets that have subbullets in them, I guess I want to just be clear in my mind, this is kind of your working list, I, I think, if I'm understanding it right, the upper one of draft list of needs need to be accommodated, that's sort of the things that you know have to be reflected that maybe weren't reflected last year, and the things below it are at least your, your current working thinking on things that we may need to consider change, either reducing or cutting. Am I, am I tracking?
I wrote the list down, I've worked with our CAO on the list, but I'm the one that has taken responsibility to bring voice to those.
Sure, but that, that is what these reflect, okay.
Yep, these are realities, that the proposed budget, that first list, draft list of needs to be accommodated, they have to be accommodated in this next proposed budget. They have to be accommodated in this next proposed budget.
And the second list is you're kind of thinking on things we need to reevaluate, or maybe-
It's an objective list, not a subjective list, not a politicized list. It is a objective list of possible considerations.
I just want to use that in part, the reason I'm asking so many questions is I want to use that as part of the basis for my continued work and thinking.
And if you have ideas for how those things can be accommodated through draft guiding principles and priorities, please have at it. Please, please, please. You know, I need to phone a friend, I need a rescue. As I, as one of five, I can't do it, I'm coming up short. I don't like it, but I am, so I'm admitting it. The best I've been able to come up with is a plan for a plan. Really? At least it's something. So. I respect that staff has a lot of work to do ahead of it to give us a proposed balanced budget that meets the challenges in front of us. And I need your help in order for us as a work group to be successful in giving them guidance that won't just tear them up. That's all. So, I would suggest, why don't we move on from this budget discussion?
I'm prepared for the next one.
December 4th, absolutely. And-
We're not done.
No, I just, I just want to, I just want to, it's really been going through me right now. And, first of all, I hope the staff looks at this work as additive. That's, that's the, that is the purpose here. And I do believe that when I reflect on last year's, for example, I wouldn't have known that the, the, what was the name of the group that moved to organize, again, I'm sorry?
Child Support Services.
The Child Support Services was an option. I wouldn't have known that previously. And I think that by looking more closely now, I will be able to pick out some things, but I also will be interested in hearing what, what staff, staff thoughts are as well, because I know that I don't know everything within this budget. So I'm looking forward to this being a cooperative process, to Commissioner FISA's point as well.
A lot of information to take in. I guess I'm going to wait to hear the November 6th presentation from Tanya, because at this point in time, I have a disconnect from what I am hearing, the conversation of what we are going to cut versus what we have communicated in the media, that we have an 11% increase. So we've told the general public a number, a big number.
I haven't, what are you talking about?
We have communicated what the projected AV revenues will be.
We have to-
To my knowledge, there has not been any public communication around the county's AV. Since the number has been thrown out, I will now talk about it, and I do not have graphs or specific numbers to actually back that up. The county's AV this year is 11%. That growth, and this is what I referenced in the last conver, when I first had, talked about this, is based on the Intel SIP retiring last year, and now this, this year, the property taxes coming on, on the tax rolls. We always budget for an estimate with AV every single year, because this budget, this fiscal year, we are basing it on that AV. So yes, we have an 11%, and yes, we actually budgeted, knowing that we would have that property tax coming on the books. We ha, and I don't have the numbers, so I'm doing, brought past that, coming back on the tax rolls, we have a general normal growth in our property tax outside of data centers that we're seeing come on. So this is not going to be a windfall year, as some have alluded to. There are other jurisdictions that are seeing that. We are taking the time to have Joe Nelson, he will be presenting to the board, so that there's also a great, greater understanding of just where have, where we at with just property valuation within the county. Part of that, I know, for example, Commissioner Snyder, you've asked, just with curiosity, based on what we're seeing in the economy, what does it mean for Washington County? So that will be the first part of the comp, of the presentation.
November 6th.
November 6th, thank you. Then we will break down what that AV is. We will also break down what we budgeted this year. So based on that AV, what's in our current budget, and how, what is that increase for us to budget for in this upcoming fiscal year? In addition, we will be doing a more robust fiscal forecast. That fiscal forecast will be including the assumptions based on what we know today for the various labor agreements that are in place, that will have an increase to cost next year. We will also be budgeting for what the Sheriff's Office anticipates for their actual need in FTE. As the board may recall, we cut 26 positions from the Sheriff's Office to the tune of about $4 million, give or take. The sheriff has expressed the need for those positions to come back. Generally, that need is much higher within the jail than patrol, given where we are at with staffing. But we are working in partnership with the sheriff. I want to right now commend Sheriff Massey, that sheriff is not saying, I want all those positions in one year, but really taking a very thoughtful approach. So we'll be building that within the forecast. We will be building also the annual cost of body worn cameras within that fiscal forecast, and then other items that are on this list. So we still have a structural imbalance in our budget. I don't know what that looks like yet, I haven't seen the final, the forecast, and just want to express appreciation to the finance team, Brenda Bartlett, and the ACAs and department directors to get a more fine-tuned look at our fiscal forecast. You will have a much longer discussion, I anticipate, this year on that fiscal forecast, and I would encourage you to also bring up just what could be missing, or what are areas that we may not be anticipating within that. We also will have four-year consideration in that packet, we will have last year's budget principles and priorities. I know you know them, but if staff initially, after seeing where the AV is, if we have any initial suggestions for your consideration, we will include them in that item too. Happy to answer any questions, but I have no numbers in front of me to back up, so I will not comment any more specifically on numbers.
So is this, what you shared, is that public information? Is that what Commissioner Willie was referring to?
It, it's public now.
Not, no, before, and, because I, is it a, something that the board has visibility? Is it an email that I-
I apologize, so annually, once the property tax statements go out, and Joe has certified the property tax, we do a press release, and that was sent out October 17th.
It was posted publicly.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was posted and-
I read it on Nextdoor.
Nextdoor.
That's where I-
Yeah. So, so my, my mistake, it's, it's annual, I didn't put two and two together, so I didn't forward the press release to you all.
I thought the board always gets press releases.
We don't.
No.
It happens all the time.
This one's a, a very automatic one, so I will pay better attention.
They're not even highlighted on the front page of the website. That's another one, I try to-
So what it is- Yeah, me too, I was just on it.
I, I will forward it to you right now, but it, it does, it does talk about the property tax statements account for 100, or 1.72 billion. It does say that this is an increase of 11.7 or 183 million. It also goes into how the, that property tax is distributed to the different taxing districts. So it gives a high level where those are, that 16 cents comes to county government, 34 cents to for neighborhood services provided by city special districts. It talks about education and regional services, so I will-
1 million isn't just to the Washington County General Fund of Conferents. 11%. And, but last year, that same press release would have said 4.25?
I would assume, so I don't have it in front of me, but it would say something to that effect. Yes.
But as you can see, all things are not even between this current fiscal year and next year's fiscal year. Hence that bullet list.
I mean, I'm taking the lead of the, our county administrator about this, and the fact that the way she views the math adding up, that we're still going to have, I mean, I take that at face value, like, okay, we're, we're going to have a, we're going to have a tough year.
I synced up that whole bullet list with Ms. Angie.
I think, I don't disagree with that, Jason, but what she is also asking us is to help her and the staff prioritize
Yes.
that money. And you've heard it here, you know, about things that have been identified as detailed list of needs to be accommodated. So that would certainly be the first. But I'm just saying that I'm going to reserve judgment, I'm going to do my homework on the yep, service level assessment, and then I will wait until I hear the report from Tanya as to how this is going to-
Can I provide a clarification on that? So, I am not asked, I have not asked the board to prioritize services. What we are doing within this year's fiscal forecast is having a more robust fiscal forecast to further identify, for example, knowing that the sheriff will, I'm going to use the Sheriff's Office positions. We have been clear with your board, and your board, I have seen the nodding heads, that the sheriff will come back and ask for positions. So instead of giving fiscal direction and/or board policies and priorities, that we don't accommodate those FTE within the, the budget, we would have to cut more later on as departments present. So that is why we're trying to take a greater stock this year of what are all of those commitments to have to have a more robust fiscal forecast for this upcoming budget cycle. Because we don't have a lot of wiggle at all in the budget, so it has to be more precise. So I just wanted to put greater clarity on what I said, just because it's on the record.
I think if we continue on the course we've been on, Ms. Angie will come up with a proposed balanced budget, and each of the five of us will say, we don't like this budget. And in my world, in my view of integrity, that isn't good enough.
I think she needs to hear from us before she puts together that budget that we would say, we don't like it. I mean, the part that we don't like is the fact that we have to cut again for the sixth consecutive year.
Yeah.
She doesn't like that either.
No, I understand that. I'd like to say, you've got $12 to increase this year, but it's not a cut. Don't have that option either.
So it sounds like there are some bullets on that common, that draft common understanding list that you're in agreement on, and that's a good starting point.
It is, and that's what I liked about you putting together this information, it's, it's specific about items that we need to take into consideration, our, our first, first discussion as to where we're going to spend our money and what's priorities.
I thought it was really helpful.
Yeah, I did too. It's very good.
I, I'll just say it again, I, if this sheet, or this sheet, make it colorful, has our current draft guiding principles, I don't know how, I as one person, I don't know how to take that specific bullet list and put it into this. I can certainly put it on a sheet of paper, but I don't know how to put that in a list of direction.
I don't know that we, I would want us to be that specific in that, but we can certainly-
You would or would not?
Would not want us to be that specific where we put these into our principles.
And priorities.
Priorities.
So.
I like what we did last year, quite frankly, and if we, because it was high enough level to give direction, and then we can certainly communicate back as a board that we've had conversations about these bullet points or whatever else, and we'd like that to be in consideration.
Well, we can call it whatever we want to call it, right? We can have our current guiding principles and priorities. We can have an additional directional list, which is agreement on just that budget list. For example.
I do-
But if we, as a majority, agree with that, assign that to our CAO, great. Maybe that's it, maybe that's all we have to do, and we're done, December 4th.
I do think that's what we're headed to. Like, I think the guiding principles, higher level document may need some revisions, but I, my vision is that that probably stays somewhat similar, and then I'm envisioning, just described sort of more of a detailed notes or direction type of thing that says like, we're going to fund body worn cameras for the jail, and we're going to, you know, whatever the lines are, but like something-
I'm willing to go, I as one of five, I'm willing to go that a little bit further. In addition to that information we've already laid out, I'm willing to say as one of five, here are my priorities. My priorities for community outcomes, and my priorities for workforce outcomes. If you don't give me, if you propose a budget, a balanced proposed budget that doesn't reach these outcomes, I'm going to have some basic problems with your proposed budget.
I get that.
Okay, so-
Those are sort of three concepts to think about.
Right.
There's the old, sort of like the last year type of high level thing, there's maybe specific notes, and then there's like general community outcomes.
Yep, yep.
So we should frame it, I think we should all be thinking of framing it that way, though.
You know, I think that what this should help us do too, is not be at a place at the end where we're making amendments.
Right, I agree.
That this is, this is almost reverse.
We should be doing the work upfront and looking-
You're, you're meaning budget amendments, like in May.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Members of the Budget Committee may do that, but if we've done our job well, hopefully, we won't have those, to your point.
Yeah.
Fair enough. I agree with that principle. That's a new principle.
I, I couldn't have gotten to this point from this discussion as we've gotten without having had this discussion.
We're doing good work.
Yep, that is.
So, that's great. Okay. What else did you guys want to?
You get an Oscar.
I can, I purchased 12 Oscars for you. Don't worry, they're a lot less than 50.
But I didn't see you get one.
What else would you all like to talk about today? This roundtables are for board conversation, board-driven topics.
What, what, what I had suggested to the chair was, I heard a pretty strong message, I think we all heard a pretty strong message Tuesday night. Tanya has sent out an email explaining today, giving me a little bit more background on, let's see if I can find that real fast, did that come out? About emergency declarations. I know anything about that, so I appreciate the email out here. I also heard, and I'm reading in her email, the governor has submitted $5 million for the food bank. I had a conversation with a school superintendent last night, and they are trying to provide kind of brown bag food packages for the kids on Friday when they leave school.
Many schools already have a weekend backpack program.
So with all of that, I was suggesting, at least for discussion, that we consider making a contribution to the Washington County Food Bank. Now, I don't know if, with all of this activity, I don't know if that's excess, but I'm just saying that I think we should have a conversation about what it is that we heard Tuesday and what things that we can do to try and communicate a message that we are listening and considering doing something.
I would frame it a little bit differently. I think our most, I mean, I've thought about this a lot, both before Tuesday through Tuesday, watching what's happening. And to me, the overarching framing of this is that our most vulnerable community members are basically under attack, and it is purposeful with, with what appears to be a goal to maximize suffering, which I think is just absolutely deplorable. I referred in my speech when I was sworn in that I take it extremely seriously and is one of my utmost highest priorities to look out for and be the voice for people that don't have a voice, the most vulnerable members of our community. And Commissioner Willie, from where I sit, this is about the food and nutrition situation. This is about immigrant refugee situation and issues in our community. And all of that, to me, goes under this more overarching community of our most vulnerable community members being under attack. And I think we actually should consider a number of actions in relation to that. And there may be another one or two, perhaps, other ways that our most vulnerable community members are being attacked that I'm missing. I don't want that to be a fully inclusive list, but to me, those two at least are very significant in our community. And I think we're, to some extent, and this is some feedback I've gotten from others, this is not the situation in every state in the country. And that's very concerning to me too, because I think it adds to the fact that there's, there's particular targeting going on, and that's not okay either. So I, I have a number of actions that I think we should consider, but I do want to, I do want to share that framing and get your reactions.
So he has already spoken to one action.
Yep.
He'd like us to consider. What are the other actions?
Yeah, I can, this is just, again, kind of top of mind. I do think that if we're going to consider declaring an emergency, it should probably be to combat and protect our most vulnerable community members. That's how I would think of it. I think to rapidly try to respond to that, this is an appropriate use of one time. Like, we're in a situation right now, and to me, this is the type of situation where we need to step up. And I'm open to ideas, but I think that's using resources to support community-based organizations that are already doing this work and can do more quickly is the right way to do that. I, I think there are probably, I, I, I respect the Oregon Food Bank, and maybe you're talking about something more local, but I would like to see us targeting the CBOs in the county that we know, that we trust, and that can really provide better food and nutrition services and support in the community. And then I think we also need to do that on the immigrant refugee support front. I'm a little less clear. I, I want to hear more from, and I think I talked to the, to Tanya about this a couple of weeks ago, about trying to hear from the CBOs that are in that space, what they need most and what would be most effective. But to me, this has to happen fast too. So like, figure leadership team, figure out a plan in a week, money out the door within two weeks. And then I think we need to make a statement from all of the elected officials in the county, so not just the five commissioners, or four commissioners and chair, plus the auditor, frankly, and the sheriff and the DA, that is clear and unequivocal stating our support for these vulnerable community members. That's my starting place, and I also want to acknowledge, these are not just my ideas. I think I've been in dialogue with Commissioner Fie for a number of weeks on some of this stuff that is becoming more clear to me. So I, and frankly, the county administrator, so I don't want to, I don't want to create all that as just my idea. But that's in a summary level where I think we should head.
So I like to think that I'm open to ideas, but I don't just stop at the theme of providing money for food to somebody else, or providing money to the CBOs, including for food. That isn't the end point. That is only half a statement.
Sure.
Where does the money come from? So I know we've been laying people off. So from my standpoint, unless Ms. Angie tells me, I know we can repurpose money, but that's revisiting a decision that was already very hard to do. So I thought, I can sign hollow letters, you know, but what action are we going to take? What dollars can we repurpose? I have been thinking and have theorized over these last few weeks that, you know, with the way Congress is, I support our congressional delegation, but I don't need to go to the NACO DC conference. And I'm thinking, okay, I've, I've used some of that travel and education. I didn't use it to pay for staying over in Bend at the conference in June. I didn't use it to cover my gas money to and from. I've been doing that personally. There are a lot of Metro meetings I go to, not a lot. There are some Metro meetings I go to or elsewhere where I don't put the reimbursement in, but I have done some. Whatever remains beyond what I've already spent today, fine, let's repurpose that. Should be at least a thousand bucks. It's a thousand dollars more than some, than we have to start with. So I can identify some money, but am I willing to repurpose other program dollars that we've already put into action? No, we don't have, from my viewpoint, we don't have spare dollars.
So the SIP contingency is where I was thinking of it coming from, just to be clear.
SIP contingency also speaks to our reserve level, and we are oversubscribed in our capital improvement plan. So could we? Sure. But it's not burning a hole in my pocket because I remember the state of affairs that Laurel Brown brought to us and how we are just one notch above falling backwards. So, sorry for being so darned pragmatic and responsible. I, we're going in the wrong direction as a county, and I'm not proud of that. So that's why we've got, it isn't as easy as, we can turn to Ms. Angie and say, solve this problem. Come up with, you know, however many millions of dollars you want and, and have a grant program where every, we've had a lot of nonprofits coming to us in the last three months saying, we need money, we need money, we need money. And we can turn the clock back on programs here that we have a POR for, or, you know, bite our nose off to spite our face for this next proposed budget. We can do that. But we have to make sure we do it with eyes wide open. So I don't disagree with the ideas, but show me where the money comes from.
I guess that's what we should, sorry. That's where we should ask you, Tanya, to say, you've heard proposals from two commissioners. Happy to be the third one to say, well, come back to us on how we do that. And what do you need? Is there a dollar amount that you need to approve, that you can approve on your own? And is there a number of dollars that you need to come back to the commissioners to make that? So I, I think as our budget officer, I think it, I want you to come back to us on how we do what you've heard today.
I'm not sure that we all feel that way. I just wanted to.
I'm not sure we're in agreement on that.
So can I just talk through some mechanics on this? I think that if you tell me what are the specific actions that you are interested in taking, staff can come back and provide you options. Repurposing any dollars within our operational budget means that we would have to stop doing something in this fiscal year. I'm going to say a why to this. We have assumed that we would have a general turnover rate of FTE. We are seeing a far lower turnover rate of FTE because we don't have the FTE in our operating budget to turn up. As soon as we're, as soon as someone leaves, we're trying to fill that as soon as possible. So we don't have.
People are staying more.
And they're staying.
That's what's going on too.
We, we don't have wiggle room with our, with our operating budget. You could say, Tanya, look at reserves. And I would say, okay, you have a policy though. So if you use reserves this next budget year, I would be saying you have to fill those reserves to that level. So that would be, that would put into the context of what we look at for budget direction this coming year. So that would be just my.
The SIP contingency is part of that reserve.
Yep, so, so one example, you put you said that contingency, and then this next budget year, I would say, you have to replace that contingency. So that means you have to do less somewhere else, and departments would have.
Next year's money today.
Correct, correct. So, and, but those are options for your.
I think there are times to do that, and I think this is one of them. That's my opinion.
And we were appearing to be on death. That's the message I heard. And I don't want to respond with a non-response.
But I've been trying to figure out what to, how to act on the immigration and refugee front for weeks, actually since August, to be honest.
I would also suggest you talk to the sheriff because there are some very supportive things that she is doing.
Great.
That is not mine to say.
Is that the direction you've gotten to go back to the reserve?
No, wait, no, no, you, no, I have. But Commissioner.
Oh, he says not had a chance.
Can I give just what I was saying? I was giving the mechanics of it. But I have not heard clear, Tanya, please go explore your ass.
Thank you, and I, I do agree with Commissioner Snyder. I, I believe that this is the time to act. I think we have to be cognizant, as the chair mentioned earlier, that we've got three more years of this administration. And I think we have to be clear at if we do intend to do this, that this is a strain, and we are borrowing from our future to do this. I think it's very important to be really clear. And I think we have to reiterate when we do that, what, this is something that we're doing to support our CBOs. This does not change how the county, what the county's limitations are in relationship to interfering with the federal government. I, I'm concerned about that. I really want to make sure that we are consulting with our general counsel and making that, that very clear. But it is, it is a very desperate time, and it's a desperate time for a lot of people. And I do believe it is the time to act. But we also have to keep in mind, like I said, what will our future hold? And we have to make a commitment to ourselves to refill that, to refill that reserve.
And as I'm hearing some of this language, are you saying, open the door up for all CBOs? Or I've heard food, I've heard immigrant and refugee, so.
So my, so what I would propose is that we understand what the options are through from Ms. Angie in relationship to how do we, how do we address food insecurity? That food insecurity may change if the SNAP benefits change. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. But if it does happen, I think we have to be able to adjust there. I don't think the, the immigrant, the, the immigration issue and the dealing with ICE is going to change. I think that we need to continue to be focused on supporting the CBOs that support that, that support. Does that make sense?
I don't know what you're saying, continue to do what we've been doing to support our CBOs. Do that work, or did, what isn't clear to me is for immigration, what you're saying we're going to do differently.
I think we, we need to look at support for food insecurity, for, for families that are affected by.
Yes, I caught that part.
And I think we need to look at other, other needs that that community may have, whether it's rental assistance or whatever it may be. But my, my advice is we look to our CBOs to tell us how we can best spend what resources we put forward. They are the people that are on the front line. They are the people that should be telling us.
So if I might, we've gone down this path before of making an ask to our CBOs. You, you did give one example of rental assistance, and our team has already asked for extraordinary dollars from Metro or $2 million more dollars specifically for eviction prevention now and supporting community action. And that's some information that's been in our email only recently.
That's actually why it wasn't on my list, just to be very specific.
But the other thing I'm trying to point out, on the food front, I think that is clear and specific, and I've offered up one place to start with some dollars. But if we're going to ask, give direction to Ms. Angie to do, to add something more to her plate and that of staff on CBOs, we, as a board, have to say, okay, also, Ms. Angie, since recognizing we're asking you to do more, what do we have to accept comes off of your plate in this current month and in this current quarter? Because what if we don't get a continuing resolution until December 1st?
Our framing in your board discussion, if I may suggest, food insecurity has been an ongoing issue. I would suggest that when you talk about food insecurity, it is framed within the SNAP benefit disruption. And I just say that because we are not, even with SNAP. And I just say that because we are not, even with SNAP benefits, we are not meeting food security needs within our community. So just from a framing perspective.
I agree with that framing.
Yes, I do too.
I'm also hearing, Tanya, that some of the ICE activities happening in Washington County, people are also, there's more insecurity because people are not going to the grocery stores. Kids are not eating. So there's also that layer of complexity.
I do not have what I need.
Idea, what, that's a theme, but what is the actual idea or of direction? To work with identi-, some existing C B Os on what their grocery store program is? And how long are you asking staff to look to fund that? Because ICE has been doing what they've been doing every month of this year. I don't see it stopping. So how, what is your direction for that you're proposing to Ms. Angie to address that theme of food insecurity for immigrants who are too afraid to go to the grocery store?
Well, Tanya, do you want to repeat the concept you were providing earlier, some of the homework that you would prefer we? If we're going to tap into the reserve along those lines? So. Cause I do want you to come back to us to some money and then we go from.
I think we need to, I was going to say, I think we need to provide that.
I think we're getting there, but I think we need to provide more direction and it doesn't sound like there's, you know, there's not unanimous support, but there's more than three or at least three.
So for the SNAP food thing or the immigrant grocery?
With some forms of, I guess I've heard the food thing from four and immigration from three.
Well, I'm part of that. I don't know who, who is not on the food SNAP.
Okay, you're on.
I think you need to talk about amounts because that, that.
I offered, I specified where dollars could come from. What does support have to look like?
You're, you're correct.
So are we talking about, Clackamas did a hundred thousand dollars for the food bank, correct? My, that was in your, in your.
That is correct. And they discussed this at their board meeting today.
I would think that that's a minimum, what we need to do in relationship to.
Support in our community.
Support in our community. And I would also say that that support needs to be, we need to, I agree with Jason from the standpoint that we need to keep it as local as possible. That's, 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 I think that's really important, is to keep it as local as possible.
I would say a hundred thousand is not enough, but I don't want to make the call to the number, Tanya. I think as a budget officer, we look to you to do the hard math and then come back. Because Clackamas County and Washington County are not, one, same population. Two, within the complexity that exists in Washington County does not exist in Clackamas County. And what's happening in Washington County in addition is not happening in Clackamas County. So I think we're responding and solving different problems in addition to similar problems that are uniform to perhaps nationwide in terms of the disruptions from the federal administration and the shutdowns that is happening. So, um, I think I, I want you to make the number options rather than us saying.
We're talking about violating our own reserve policy.
Yes.
So that's going to have to come from us.
Yeah, but, but it needs to be presented to us in a way that's.
I don't think your colleagues agree with Commissioner Fine.
No, I think, I think we need to give a number in the face, uh, and I don't, Jason, I don't know what you were thinking, but the hundred thousand dollars was the number I had in my mind, the food bank. Or however you want to.
I think that's a bit.
How is that?
I, I just, given the needs, I, I would be thinking about this framing this in the, between now and the end of the year. So thinking about it on more of like a two-month runway as far as period of time. And so I, I think it needs, with the caveat that we're trying to, you know, work on the SNAP support part of this on the food, I think it probably needs to be more than that. And I think on the immigration and, uh, refugee support, which I think probably heads towards C B Os that are already working in that space, would be north of that too. To be meaningful. I don't, I don't want this to, I want this to be truly helpful, not, I'm going to use the word, not a token or gesture. Two fifty for food and two hundred for immigration and refugee support.
Over two months.
Yeah, total for the two months. Throwing it out there for discussion.
Well, let's, uh, let's give Tanya that direction and see what kind of a response we get back from that.
And I would hope that that response includes the impact, the overall impact. That's what you're asking, I think, here too. So, so that we know, uh, and, and how we move, how, how we move forward. And, um, I would, I would also encourage a revisit, but with the understanding that this is, we don't, it's not limitless.
Completely agree. I don't do that. I don't take this lightly. Like, I think this is a big, like, the decision around the, the money and the budget is a big deal. Like, I don't, I'm not looking at this like, yeah, let's do this every week or this is something that I'm just willy-nilly throwing out there. Like, I take it seriously.
Okay, so for the hundred thousand for food?
Two hundred and fifty thousand is what he said.
Two hundred and fifty for food? Okay.
And two hundred for immigrant and refugee C B Os.
So two hundred and fifty for food distribution. So what you would be asking for staff to come back with an approach of how that would be delivered? I did hear a theme of within Washington County network.
Most effective.
I heard that. Then I heard then two hundred thousand for immigrant and refugee. I, I didn't hear specifically for what. I've heard C B Os, I've heard, but for what?
So I think the one, one need I know of, and I'll just speak to that, is the, is additional support in the, the legal arena. So I know there's at least one C B O in that space. There may be others. There may be another need there. That's where I'm a little less, I feel a little less knowledgeable and I'll, I'll own that.
Well, I'll offer that, uh, I'm aware of, as expressed, that, uh, in addition to school kids going to school, parents are afraid to go to work, which means they're not able to make their rent, their utility for their food. And so, um, you know, the legal front has been a problem, um, since Trump one point oh. Not that I'm closed-minded on that, but I think the needs, uh, the human needs are greater than.
You'd rather see it go to human needs, like the human needs on that front?
So I guess maybe, can I be clear of what I'm not asking for? If you say, Tanya, two hundred thousand and please work with our C B Os, I can already tell you what they're going to say to me. We have already lost federal, we've already lost state funding, we've already lost, um, private donors and philanthropy. We have so many needs. That two hundred thousand could be trinkled amongst many C B Os because there are needs. So that's, that's just why I'm asking for specificity, um, as we develop an approach. And to really be thoughtful about what are your, what are your outcomes?
I think we need to be very, if, when I say C B Os, I mean, C B Os that are dealing with affected immigrants and refugees.
Directly.
Directly.
So here's my concern. We heard loud and clear on Tuesday night, frustration, fear and anger about how ICE is present in the Washington County community and removing people, even legal people from our streets. And looking for us to have an answer to that. And some of the things they, that some of the testimony asked us to do is actually not legal.
I would agree. We're not going to intervene and impede federal law enforcement. That's not our role and that's not legal. We're not going to do it.
So part of what I heard in this discussion is based on not just what's in the news and common knowledge, but also what we heard Tuesday night. So as we've been talking about immigrant and refugee response, I go back to what was being asked of us Tuesday night. And so, you know, two hundred thousand dollars can go to one specific organization that has been meeting with Board of Commissioners already, asking for money. But is that going to address the need that was talked about Tuesday night? I'm not convinced. If you think it does, great, but it's not going to stop the activities that we heard time and time again on Tuesday.
It might help some combat, combat them.
I think from my standpoint, we've communicated a couple of numbers. The desire, I don't know, Tanya, is not clear yet on what exactly we're asking. And it is because we don't know exactly what we're asking. But with the exception of the direction is to, uh, provide the most direct route to providing services and help to those that directly affect. That's a pretty, that's a pretty general statement, but maybe not. But I don't know that that's sufficient enough for Tanya to say, okay, let me, let me noodle this a little bit and then I'll get back. We're kind of dumping it on your lap and I'm sorry, but.
There is always, and especially right now, more community need than we have money for. So I can completely develop some type of proposal and bring it back to you. But I just, my fear is it's not going to be the right proposal. Um, and it is not going to meet what your true objectives are. One, um, item of consideration is Centro has scheduled an emergency meeting on Monday, eleven, or November 3rd. It has many partners who are going to be at that meeting, um, including the Rapid Response Regional Leads, B N S R, O F A, O F A, A C L U, Innovation Law Lab and others. In addition, coming up in November, Virginia Garcia is also holding a group. I would maybe ask you, we go to this meeting and you listen to what they say they need and maybe craft a response. I'm only saying that because even with two hundred thousand dollars.
It's not going to go very far.
It does, yeah. So being very strategic. Um, and, um, I don't have the best answers to give you in this space because there's many needs and many perspectives in this. So that could be one path forward. And I think what you may hear from some of these is what may even seem as, we can call it token or performative, such as asking the federal delegation to, um, continue to pursue legislation regarding, um, ICE, actions, specifically face coverings, you know, badges. I think you may hear from some of those partners that they would still like their Washington County leaders to be talking to your elected counterparts and asking for some of that change.
It's different when that ask is made of us, of community leaders like that. It is different when we go to a meeting and hear a bunch of feedback and have discussions over the last three months. And then we decide that's the action we're going to take. Like, to me, those are different things.
So that's where Monday may be a helpful convening, but I don't know.
I've had, I've had some of those one-on-one conversations, but I'm happy for the board to uh, agree to a draft letter of, of those very same considerations.
Okay, was waiting until that meeting on November 3rd. Can get feedback from that group.
I don't think we need to wait on the food, the, the food part, though.
I don't think so either.
I, I think we should be.
So I would just raise to just the board's awareness, we do have ACRE scheduled that night. So if the two board liaisons, there may be consideration to post that meeting.
I think that, what are your thoughts?
You have three other board members who could go.
Earlier today, I had a thought of possibly trying to, well, have the ACRE members attend that meeting or maybe a contingent of them or the chair and, I don't know. I, I know that's not what their invite was for, so I, I'm careful. Around that, it's not my place, but I don't think, I, I, I'm concerned about the ACRE meeting conflicting with that. And the fact that the chair of ACRE testified on Tuesday night and is expecting us to, well, us to respond. And we're working on that today a little bit, but.
And I've talked to Tanya a little bit about, uh, whether or not it would be appropriate to postpone as well, so. ACRE.
Yeah. And what was the thought on that? Or do we want to talk more?
So from my perspective, um, and I've had board members ask that I always be in attendance at that meeting. I, um, given, um, this conversation, I can't be in two places at once, haven't figured that out yet. So, um, um, one, one approach that you could take is, um, there could be an email to ACRE saying, you know, postponing, um, the meeting. Because of these reasons, this is what, what we're going to do. So that could be, that could be an outcome. What we were going to be working through is Janelle Bell and Lucy, um, Haymer. We're going to be in attendance and talking through, um, the updates to the ACRE charter. So that could completely wait, um, for the next month. I will note, um, that I believe that, um, John Al Bell has been invited to the Centro meeting too. So he may not even be in attendance at that.
Would there also be, I guess I'm thinking through this iteratively, so would there be benefit to getting ACRE's perspective on the same question we may be putting forward in the convened Centro meeting?
I could put money on, they're going to say, it has to be more than that.
Oh, as far as the amount? Is that what you're saying?
Jason was just talking about.
The where, not the amount. Sorry, I wasn't meaning the amount. I was meaning the where. Uh, particularly on the.
And I wasn't, I, I didn't think that we were going to be asking on Monday night where we should give the money. I think what, the advice I heard was go and listen and be aware and then, and then determine.
Well, I hope we would get input on that. That's all I'm meaning, like, use that input to guide our decisions.
Not going to be much different than the, the feedback that we heard from ARPA, I mean, ACRE on what, uh, what they were happy we did with ARPA money and how they wish we had done things differently with ARPA money. So I know, I realize you weren't here for that, but, um.
So I guess I'm only two can actually go to that meeting.
Why?
No, we can all.
No, we're not deliberating, we're not deliberating on a decision. We're hearing community input. It can be posted on the calendar.
Make sure you don't talk about anything with us, any of us.
Yeah, we would need.
There's no decision making that.
Yeah, we'd have to.
Characterize the five of you in that meeting.
I had seven o'clock meeting that night as well.
I do think we have to postpone ACRE though.
I'm not on ACRE. There's three members that goes on, I don't know. If you ran through what's on the agenda. But also there might be some community members on ACRE that are excited to talk to you. So I don't know how you prioritize. I do think though, and I, I do agree with you, Tanya, that I think it's, it's a sort of, I wouldn't say required, but. It's absolutely necessary for you to be.
If you're more discussion about my suggestion that we do declare an emergency. Anybody think that to some extent legitimizes our financial decisions too?
I guess that need, what exactly.
When I read this statute that, or ordinance that Tanya was reflecting on, it pretty, I mean, to me, what is being done to target vulnerable community members clearly fits. The criteria in my mind, and that's partly why I started thinking about how to, how I wanted to frame this.
There are two primary places which govern your board's ability to. Declare an emergency, not a public health emergency, that's separate. The first is ORS 401, which gives the general state statute requirements for county governments to declare an emergency. And then we have separately passed an ordinance eight point three six, which covers Washington County's requirements for declaring an emergency. You know, they're fairly, fairly broad requirements for doing that. And after we're out of here today, I can follow up with your board with the specific language from the statutes so that you can see it with your own eyes.
Does this also fit under a public health emergency? Talking about nutrition support, talking about.
Happy to look at that and get back to you, Commissioner.
I'm just saying that I don't think it's exclusive to, I don't think, public health has to be excluded from that consideration.
Well, I did from, from my standpoint, yeah, we can, we could do that and that sounds all well and good, but exactly does that obligate us to do things? We declare it and then what?
What, what action, so to speak?
Yeah, I mean, or is it just an action?
I think it could be a reason why we use money from our contingency or reserves.
That would certainly support that. You're correct there, but.
That's where I'm kinda headed with it, a skeletal message to the community.
So if it's helpful, I mean, this is what. Chapter eight point three six of our county ordinance states, so in regard to declaring an emergency, the Board of County Commissioners may declare a state of emergency in the unincorporated area of the county. Or any part thereof, if the board determines that such an area is suffering or is in imminent danger, suffering a natural or man-made event that may cause injury. Or death to persons or damage or the destruction of property or that disrupts the provision of important government or public services, et cetera. And then it provides a non-exclusive list, things like civil disturbance, natural disasters, et cetera, et cetera. Later it goes on to discuss.
Ordinance code language that puts into effect the voter approved charter statement that we should all be familiar with.
And that authorizes the board to take such actions and issue such orders as determined to be necessary and prudent to protect the public and property and to efficiently conduct activities that minimize or mitigate the effects of the emergency, including but not limited to, and then another non-exclusive list of actions.
But does that also, does that imply that we will have our public safety, our sheriff's deputies intervene? I don't want any implication. That's what that message says. Well, I'm. We're saying that no, because we got legal advice here.
Well, and, and to be clear, this is not legal advice. I'm telling you what the statute says. I provide legal advice in a more appropriate fashion. But the statute is written very broadly and that includes both the authority to declare an emergency and the response to the emergency. So a lot of, a lot of that is within the discretion of your board.
I just heard that very passionately at the end about the woman wanting us to declare this. And my question, I guess, would be, what do you think that's going to do? I asked the same question when sanctuary city and sanctuary state was all being discussed way back in sixteen. And I asked the question, what does that mean to you? And everybody had their own interpretation of what that meant and the expectations of declaring that sanctuary status. So I just don't want any misunderstanding or miscommunication that, okay, we've done that because we can. Now what does that mean?
Yeah, specify what the purposes of our declaration is.
And isn't there, isn't there always an imposed timeline as well?
There is.
And what is that timeline?
Uh, you have to, you have to determine it.
Okay, we have to determine.
Yeah.
We've, we've talked about ideas of identifying need. Food SNAP, immigration, refugee support for a class of CBOs to be. But between now and the end of the year.
So I mean, from.
The timeline.
From my perspective, if this was something that your board was interested in moving forward with, we would need to understand. The nature of the emergency, that's number one. And the proposed or considered response to the emergency, and then we could determine. Yeah, we can provide you advice on that.
That's what I would want to hear.
Right.
Act I's and T's but cross but, and dotted, but did we articulate enough of that of where we would be heading for that to be worked on?
Oh, I think we can definitely start, and are you just referring to immigration at this point?
No.
Or both.
It's the.
How about this, in the interest of time? How about you, Commissioner Snyder, and you, Commissioner Willie, work with county council to put together a draft.
Would love to.
Yep.
And bring that forward for board consideration in either a work session discussion or executive session, whatever is appropriate for Tuesday. Thank you. Do I need to summarize the other parts of the discussion direction that has the full board's support? Terrific. Is there anything else that you wish for board discussion today?
I want to thank everyone on that board for presenting all of those.
I also.
And I want to say thank you, Chair, for that, providing all of that information you did for the first conversation.
Yeah.
Cause that was, that was very helpful, so.
And I appreciate that, that everyone contributed.
Well, I tried not to, but you were.
Never do.
Great. Without further ado, we're hereby adjourned. Thank you for another productive monthly roundtable. See ya.